Let's call to order the council chambers, 7:30 PM, November 8, 2016. This is John Mumper, President of Council Pro Tem. We'll have standing and have the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. My Father, and My Son, and Holy Spirit, Amen.
Father, Father.
Our Father, and our Lord and Happy.
As a body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
The religion is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Bonzal.
Here.
Mr. Clerk.
Here.
Mrs. Stickley.
Here.
Mr. Blair.
Here.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Mr. Sancker.
Here.
Mr. Mumper.
Here.
Okay, we have to make some amendments to the agenda. Ordinance number one and number two, that's for 3278 and 914, were asked to be removed by the mayor. Third item is add a communication number two, a letter from the mayor regarding financial planning and supervision commissions. Your pleasure? Mr. Blair.
I say we amend the agenda as you stated.
Oh, I love it. Mrs. Stickley?
A second.
Okay. Made by Mr. Blair and Mrs. Stickley, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
Minutes of the previous meetings. We have minutes from October 25 and November 3. Your pleasure? Mr. Sancker.
I recommend that the minutes be received as if read.
Second by Mr. Clerk. Any discussion?
Vote yes to this one.
Vote yes. And we'll call the roll.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
No requests to address council, no reports of standing committees. We have a third reading of ordinances, resolutions, the ordinance adopting a temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning occupancy or building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities, and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Your pleasure? Mr. Bonzal.
I move that we have the third reading of the ordinance.
Second by Mrs. Stickley. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
Ordinance adopting a temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning occupancy or building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities, and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, I move that the ordinance be passed.
Second by Mrs. Stickley. Any discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So, this ordinance basically is just allowing the city of Norwood to kind of put a pause and put a, you know, a word out there that we're going to come up with some regulations with medical marijuana. Basically, we're still waiting on the state to come out with some of their regulations so that we know like where they're going to allow it and certain other things. So, once the state comes out with those, then the city of Norwood, the city council will get together and we'll work on some common sense regulations that kind of, you know, protect us, our citizens and our neighborhoods. So, that's why we're kind of doing this now, that's why we're doing it for a year, just to make sure that we're kind of staying ahead of this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else? Let's have the roll call.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
Okay, introductory readings of ordinances. We removed one and two. We have number three, ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 445, for the years 2016 through 2018, and declaring an emergency. Your pleasure? Mrs. Stickley.
I move we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Second by Mr. Sancker. Discussion? Nothing? Call the roll.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 445, for the years 2016 to 2018, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 445, for the years 2016 through 2018, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 445, for the years 2016 through 2018, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clerk. Move to pass the ordinance. Second by Mr. Blair. Any discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Excellent, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So, you know, I guess I've, you know, been thinking about this for, you know, at least the last couple of days since we've kind of found out about this. And, Mr. President, this agreement is not perfect. I think that, you know, both sides, firefighters and the city, you know, we're probably looking for different things as well, but I think this agreement's a good one, and I think it gets us on the right path. And so, I just want to thank the members of Local 445. I want to thank the, I guess, Negotiating Committee for the union and the mayor, the Safety Service Director, for coming up with this agreement. So, I'm gonna vote yes on this. I think it's a good agreement, and I would urge our other council members to vote yes as well. Thank you.
Just a comment, I'm gonna abstain on this vote because of my favorite son Scott. He's a fireman. And he gets a lot of teasing at the firehouse because I'm a councilman, so I guess I might as well tease him about being my son. Mr. Sancker.
Yes, Madam President. I want to kind of follow up on what Mr. Bonzal stated. It's been quite a long, tedious negotiations on both sides, and, you know, final arrangements are never perfect for either side. Hopefully, we can work through this, and I know there's some things in there coming up in 2018 and '17 where, you know, they will be doing some more homework on it again, but it's good we can get this behind us and kind of move forward, especially with some of the other issues hanging over the city. We can use this as something where we can put in place for the next few years with part of our planning process for the state auditors. So anyhow, I'd like to thank both sides for the amount of work and the time. I have to assume that all of the negotiations were not always the happiest, and, but hopefully we come out with this with a shake of hands and then move forward and work together for the betterment of the city in the long run. So, thanks to everybody.
Mrs. Stickley.
I would also like to take a moment to thank both sides for their efforts in coming up to an agreement. One of the first things I was taught in law school is that if you walk away happy, then you didn't do your job, so this is probably a pretty good negotiation that we came to the table to. Nobody's probably extremely happy, but at the end of the day, both sides gave, and that's what matters.
I want to echo the same comments. It's never easy to negotiate contracts. It's not fun either, but it was done very well, and council has also done very well is to move ahead with this. Okay, moving on. Let's have the roll call.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Abstain. Now, let's move on. The fourth introductory reading of ordinances. I'm gonna put my glasses on for this. An ordinance declaring improvements to certain real property within the city of Norwood, Ohio, to be of public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, describing the public infrastructure improvements to be made to benefit or serve such real property, requiring annual statutory service payments in lieu of taxes, creating a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of the balance of such statutory service payments, authorizing the execution of a service agreement with the property owner of such tax increment financing real property, authorizing make-whole compensation payments to the Norwood City School District and Great Oaks Institute of Technology and Career Development, authorizing the execution of a school compensation agreement with the Norwood City School District if necessary, and declaring an emergency. Your pleasure? Mrs. Stickley.
I move we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Mr. Sancker.
I would say the same. I'd make a second on that, but I'd also like to hear from the law director on this as well, and also, I believe that there's somebody here to talk about this, and I'd like to invite them to the podium to give, you know, a background on this. Do you want to vote to have all three first and then have them in discussion, or have it prior?
They can talk first.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a TIF agreement in order to help finance the renovation, the upgrade to the parking garage across the street where CDK has gone in. It's been a part of the kind of concept of what was gonna happen over there. It's been a long and involved process to get to this, to get these documents ready. We've gone back and forth with the school board, and I just want you to know, first of all, that this will make whole the school. They'll be out not a dime as a part of this deal. One of the kind of benefits, Patrick was just, our bond council was pointing out to me earlier, is that this is a, the amount they're planning to borrow is relatively small compared to what they're gonna see as the increase in the value of that property. And so, we may be five, 10, 15 years out, and there'll be more available, excess payments that will be available for the city to then do financing for public improvements around the Central Park area, because the TIF district is the, is all of Central Park, it's not just that office building. The agenda we got today, or the amendment to the agreement that was on your desk today, I had overlooked, as we've gone back and forth on very drastic, is our standard Norwood clause, we're not paying for anything on this, on this deal, and so we got that in. If you got any questions, this is our bond council, the guy that actually wrote the giant caption. Give me a little more, little more background on this if you need.
Sure, hi, my name's Pat Woodside. I'm a partner at Frost Brown Todd, and I'm representing the city as bond counsel. And it's just a little more background, if you recall, I was here a few months ago. We sort of started to put in place the kind of overall framework for how this would work, and putting in place our ability to eventually issue the bonds that will be payable from the service payments, which will be the payments in lieu of tax that the property owners will make. We put in place the framework so that we could then issue that debt to reimburse some of the costs that have been incurred for the garage over here, which will be operated as a public garage, which we hope will not only help the current property owners and their tenants, but also to attract future tenants and development in the Central Park area. As Keith said, there are other properties that are included as part of this TIF exemption over in this area, and so, again, as Keith said, as some of that property hopefully gets developed in the future, that will also create additional TIF revenues that you could then use to, you know, as a source for funding for additional infrastructure improvements that may be needed, whether it be roads or other signage, any infrastructure that you would need that directly benefits those properties over there. So, please let me know if you have any questions about the structure, or just generally how this all works. I'd be happy to provide any information you think will be helpful.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, Pat, the timeframe for all this to happen, as far as, once we, if we approve this agreement, then your next step would be to have CDK sign, or the group sign off, and then file these papers, and then we go?
Correct. So, what happens here is that we, I'm sorry, you interrupted. Yeah, so, well, this, what happens here is, one is the pass the legislation that exempts the property from tax, and then we have the other document here that's approved as exhibit, I think, B or C, which is the service agreement. And that is the agreement whereby the property owners, of which there's one right now that owns many of the parcels over there, they'll execute that agreement whereby that owner and any future owners during the period of the TIF agrees that they will make those payments in an amount equal to the tax that they would have paid, but for the exemption. And so, that will run with the land, and then those payments will go to, you know, one, to make the school whole first, which has been a little bit of a drawn-out process, but that is the, where we've come out on that. So, those payments will go to make the school board whole. Then, there, the rest will go into the fund that we've established hereby. That fund will be used to pay for the debt that we're incurring in order to pay for the garage. And as Keith said, the amount is relatively small because the financial projections have been relatively conservative, which they need to be frankly, in order to sell the debt. So, there's a sufficient amount of coverage. The revenues are in excess of the amount we need to pay the bonds. The rest will be in the fund. Some of it will fund a reserve for the garage in the future to be maintained. The rest will be in that fund to be used for future public infrastructure improvements. There's a pretty long inclusive list that we've included in here to basically cover anything that we think may be helpful in the future if the money is there to pay for improvements over in this area. But, yeah, so, we'll have that. That'll be recorded to run with the land, and then in a couple of weeks, I'll be back here hopefully if we pass this, and we will have the documents that will be executed by the parties in connection with the issuance of the bonds. And that'll be our offering document for potential bond purchasers. The other agreements whereby the money will be collected by, or sent to a paying agent or a trustee, or they're gonna pay the bondholders, and all the other sort of mechanical items that will go along with that debt issuance.
So, there's a number of ordinances that have to be passed, just one after the other, after the other.
Yeah, exactly. Next week, there'll be a more involved list of documents that will be authorized, and those will, I'll be back to explain those, but they're all in connection with the issuance of the bonds and making sure that the bonds remain tax exempt, for example, and that the garage is operated always for the public use, and, you know, all those other sorts of things that we'll do to make sure that the money is used for the public and to spur future economic development over in this area. And as Keith said, there will be no city money that will need to go to pay for this. The tax increment financing dollars are, you know, as it sounds, based on the increment in the value of the land over here, so all existing tax revenues will remain as they are.
When you say increase in the value of the land, are you, is that increase in the value of the garage and the building, like the renovations, or just the garage that they're?
It's actually not the garage. It'll be the increase in the value of the private development. So, the office building, for example, as well as the other office buildings within these, on these parcels. Let's just say, for example, the office building over here is worth $5 million now. When, you know, the new owners have bought it, they've renovated, it's obviously worth more now that they have a lease, a substantial term. So, the value goes from 5 million to $10 million. There's an amount of tax already paid right now on the $5 million that will still go to the various taxing districts. The new revenue generated from the increase in tax, the increment from the $5 million to $10 million, that money will be captured, the portion will go to the school, the rest will be available for the public infrastructure improvements.
Excellent. And does this re, like, so there's, you know, I guess, local taxes, like city taxes, school taxes, but there's also county taxes as well?
Yeah.
Like, so, are those included in that?
Correct. The, everything but the school will be captured and be able to be used for these improvements, the public improvements. And so, the benefit of it to a city, you know, which is why this statutory framework exists, is that you're able to sort of capture that other money and use it, something that you know, I mean, by statute, has to go.
In your city.
Right here.
Yeah.
Either to that garage, which will be a couple million, the rest, again, assuming, well, hoping that the value continues to rise, you will have more money, and once you reach certain thresholds, you will be able to use that over there.
Actually, that's great. And so, is it normal for there to be a, like, I'm not against this at all, but is it normal for there to be like a school make, you know, whole type agreement into these, or is this actually something that we're going out of our way to do to be good citizens to the schools?
I wouldn't say you're going out of your way. I think that the, so, the school, the way that it works is that the school districts are required to receive notice. They have a say in this, and essentially, if they don't agree to something else, there are a couple different roads you can go down. You can shorten the term of it, decrease the percentage that is exempted. The framework they came up with that seems to work best financially is to just let the school be made whole, and they go their way, and we don't have to worry about their consent or approval of how this all works, and we will take the additional dollars. It does vary from, you know, for example, the city of Cincinnati, I do some work with, they take a smaller amount, say 27% of the normally forgotten. I think they're gonna be rethinking that, but there are plenty of municipalities and townships that do provide make-whole provisions just like this. It tends to vary. The city, for example, has much more dense development than things. Other places that are more urban, that have more housing, they have a lot more, if they're doing a residential TIF, they have a lot more students that are going to result from various developments, so they want to be paid. They don't want to be cut out because they need that money to pay them. So, it really does vary here and there, but this was more of a, I think the school district may have some other financial things going on that they pretty much demanded to be made whole, or made most sense to make them whole.
That does make sense. Yeah, thank you so much.
Of course.
Let's have the reading.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
An ordinance declaring improvements to certain real property within the city of Norwood, Ohio, to be a public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, describing the public infrastructure improvements to be made to benefit or serve such real property, requiring annual statutory service payments in lieu of taxes, creating a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of the balance of such statutory service payments, authorizing the execution of a service agreement with the property owner of such tax increment financing real property, authorizing make-whole compensation payments to the Norwood City School District and Great Oaks Institute of Technology and Career Development, authorizing the execution of a school compensation agreement with the Norwood City School District if necessary, and declaring an emergency. An ordinance declaring improvements to certain real property within the city of Norwood, Ohio, to be a public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, describing the public infrastructure improvements to be made to benefit or serve such real property, requiring annual statutory service payments in lieu of taxes, creating a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of the balance of such statutory service payments, authorizing the execution of a service agreement with the property owner of such tax increment financing real property, authorizing make-whole compensation payments to the Norwood City School District and Great Oaks Institute of Technology and Career Development, authorizing the execution of a school compensation agreement with the Norwood City School District if necessary, and declaring an emergency. An ordinance declaring improvements to certain real property within the city of Norwood, Ohio, to be a public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, describing the public infrastructure improvements to be made to benefit or serve such real property, requiring annual statutory service payments in lieu of taxes, creating a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of the balance of such statutory service payments, authorizing the execution of a service agreement with the property owner of such tax increment financing real property, authorizing make-whole compensation payments to the Norwood City School District and Great Oaks Institute of Technology and Career Development, authorizing the execution of a school compensation agreement with the Norwood City School District if necessary, and declaring an emergency.
Would you like to have a recess?
No.
I apologize.
Thanks.
Ladies and gentlemen, what's your pleasure? Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, I move that we pass the ordinance.
Mr. Clerk.
Second.
Second. Call the roll.
Mr. Bonzal. Is there a discussion here?
Okay, why not?
Thank you so much. Okay. So, yeah, thank you so much. I want to thank the law director. I want to thank the gentleman from Frost Brown Todd. Sorry, what's your name again?
Pat Woodside.
Pat Woodside, yes. I want to thank you, both of you, for your work on this. You know, to me, this seems like an agreement that we should pass. It seems like that there's really only benefit for the city of Norwood as a whole, including the, that we're gonna get the parking garage, I guess, refurbished, so it's gonna be able to be used for many more years. The schools aren't gonna lose any money from this agreement, which is a huge blessing. That's, I hear, I've heard in the past that that's been, at times, been an issue, and they actually get the most of our local taxes, so that's a good thing there. And then finally, we get, this is cool, we actually get to divert some of these county taxes from the county and push them into this development that stays right here in the city of Norwood. So, with all those three things, it sounds like a really big win for the city, so I'm gonna vote to approve this.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
Okay, introductory readings of resolutions. We have a resolution declaring intent to sell unneeded, obsolete, or unfit city personal property by internet auction during calendar year 2016 and declaring an emergency. What's your pleasure?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Sancker.
I believe this resolution was on before and was removed because there were some questions or issues a month or so ago. I didn't know if the law director knows of it, or if Mr. Gears, if you could, if all the questions or issues that came up for the last time when we removed it were worked out? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. President, I would recommend that we would have all three readings of the resolution.
Okay. Mr. Blair, second. Any discussion? Have a roll call.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
Resolution declaring intent to sell unneeded, obsolete, or unfit city personal property by internet auction during calendar year 2016 and declaring an emergency. Resolution declaring intent to sell unneeded, unneeded, obsolete, or unfit city personal property by internet auction during calendar year 2016 and declaring an emergency. Resolution declaring intent to sell unneeded, obsolete, or unfit city personal property by internet auction during calendar year 2016 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clerk.
Move to pass the resolution.
Second, Mr. Blair. Any discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Is there something specifically in mind that's being sold, or is this just to allow sales to happen in the future?
I think we're gonna sell your desk. I have no idea. Mr. Gears?
Yes, please. The intent of the resolution is, as you know, we have a police property room that has a lot of confiscated items and merchandise and stuff like that, and that's what this resolution is for. It authorizes them to go out onto the internet and to basically put it out for a bid and auction. So, it's just, it's not selling city property that we use, it's just stuff that they've used, that they've confiscated from different things. It just kind of cleans house.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Don't want to make a motion to?
Are we, don't we need to, the motion's already been made, we just need to?
Okay.
Yeah, roll call.
We're gonna call the roll then.
All right. Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
Okay, no administration reports? Okay, no administration reports, no other requests to address council. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Mr. President. Those people knew today is election day. The polls have already closed, thank goodness. So hopefully, you know, we can move on both locally and nationally. We did have a few items on the ballot that, to benefit the city. Hopefully, those have passed so we can make our future plans based upon those items as well. I've been in Chicago, just got back last evening. And we think some of the political ads and such here are kind of detrimental to one's character. Up there, they're holding back no punches. So we should consider ourselves somewhat lucky that we only had to put up with the commercials and the ads that were run here and not the type that were run up in the Chicago area. So hopefully, everybody did get out and vote. Hopefully, we have some good results to benefit the city so we can do our planning and move forward. And I do appreciate anybody and everybody who did get out to vote today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Anyone else? Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So, yeah, I just kind of want to echo Mr. Sankar's sentiments. I was out, I guess, campaigning at polling places at Mountain Zion in Sharpsburg for a couple of county candidates that I was particularly fond of. And I tell you, just seeing all the Norwood residents that are out voting and, you know, truly passionate and caring, and it was, you know, it reminded me of last year when we were on the ballot. So it was extremely great to see. I was, except Mountain Zion was just busy throughout the day. I was at Sharpsburg later. And so I'm excited just, again, it's always, Norwood residents came through. They're making their voices heard. You know, I hope the results are what we're looking for at the city. But I also know that no matter what happens, we'll move forward tomorrow. So I just want to thank the residents again for getting out there and voting.
Thank you. Mr. Clark.
It's hard to believe that we are approaching the holiday season, but I just wanted to have everyone mark their calendars. For Saturday, December 3rd, will be a Norwood Christmas Town. The businesswoman are working very hard on that. Sounds like it's going to be a great event. Horse-drawn carriages, vendors, food, carolers, all kinds of cool stuff. So mark your calendars for that. I believe it starts at 11:00 a.m. with Santa arriving on the fire truck. So make sure you mark your calendars for Saturday, December 3rd. It'll be right here behind City Hall. So it'll be a great event. Hope to see you there.
Anything else? Communications. We have a letter from Mayor Williams regarding mayor's court fines for October 2016.
Dear Madam President and members of council enclosed, please find the report for mayor's court for the month of October 2016. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Clark.
Move to receive and file the report.
Second by Mr. Bonzel. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
Next is another letter from the mayor regarding financial planning and supervising commission. What's your pleasure?
Let me read it first.
Oh, why don't we read it?
Dear Madam President and members of council enclosed, please find the resumes of Thomas Shepherd, Ron Von der Haar, and Bradley Schwartz. I have chosen these three nominees for the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission to help us with the fiscal emergency. Council and administration need to be in agreement on these nominees, and I will then submit their information to the state of Ohio. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Does it say when he needs this information?
No.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir. I recommend that the letter be received and filed